Sally.
Hey Sally.
We got a sheet. Okay. I'd like to call to order the regular Monday meeting of May the 14th, 2018 for the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor Shabbett?
Present.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
Present.
Counselor Evans?
Present.
Here.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda. Business problem for the council. CA1, approval of regular session council meeting minutes of April 9th, 2018. Approval of executive session minutes of April 9th, 2018. Approval of regular session council meeting minutes, April 23rd, 2018. Approval of executive session minutes of April 23rd, 2018. Approval of special council meeting minutes, April 24th, 2018. Counselor DiMedeiras and Counselor LeBeau absent, abstain. Approval of special council meeting minutes, April 30th, 2018. Counselor LeBeau, Counselor Shabbett, Counselor Perry abstain, absent. CA2, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Open Space and Land Preservation Commission, Recreation and Beach Commission, Planning Board, Cemetery Commission, Conservation Commission, Economic Development Commission, Tree Commission, Board of Canvassers, Senior Center Main Newsletter. CA3, correspondence receive and file. Town of Portsmouth Resolution urging Rhode Island Attorney General to distribute Google funds to Portsmouth School Committee. Jamestown Resolution in opposition of the proposed inclusion of the North Atlantic region in the 2019 to 2024 National Outer Continental Shelf Oil and Gas Leasing Program. CA4, Susan Gill Administrative Officer for the Planning Board, April Activities Report. CA5, Town Administrator, Police and Overtime Reports for April. CA6, Town Administrator, Monthly April Department Reports. CA7, Planning Board Request for Public Hearing on Proposed Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Appendix A, Zoning Article 2, Section 32-130, Definitions. Would any members of the council like to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Mr. President, CA7?
Sure. Any other items from the consent agenda? Like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To accept the consent agenda minus CA7? Okay, we'll get a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aight.
All right, Counselor Hill?
CA7, so this is a request for the Planning Board for a public hearing on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment regarding the differences between lot coverage, building coverage, and building lot coverage?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I read through this, and then I looked at the zoning code. And before we go to the expense of advertising this, only to potentially re-advertise this, I think this might be one of those things that's going to be subject to the law of unintended consequences. And I say that because the subdivision regulations also use lot coverage but in a different way. But, and I'll just give you an example. But, for example, the Village Commercial R80 and something else have in that chart a 10% building coverage. But if you look at the watershed overlay district regulations, there's this 10% impervious restriction. So, in theory, somebody could come in and say, here's my footprint of my building, it's 10%, you get it. But then when they want a driveway or a pool or something, in other words, I think that there are potential issues here that need to get sorted out before we have the public hearing, just so that we don't have to make so many substantial changes that we have to re-advertise.
So, the, I haven't looked at the subdivision regulations on that issue, but if that was to be amended, that would be at the Planning Board, it wouldn't come to the council. So, they'd actually have to advertise for their own public hearing with regard to their subdivision regulations.
I really do, but they can wait.
With regard to the watershed protection overlay district, that actually uses the phrase 10% impervious surface, so changing the definitions wouldn't affect the regulation of the watershed protection.
It won't, I agree, it won't affect the regulation, but I think it creates a confusing situation where you look at the building coverage, or somebody comes in and says, you know, here's my plan, and I'm at the 10% for a building footprint, not realizing, I just think we could do a better job other than amending the regulations so that it's really clear, so that somebody doesn't find out down the road that they got the building, but now they want a pool, and they can't because they're over the impervious limit. I just, it's very confusing, I know this is an attempt to make it better, but I don't think that it's going to. So, my suggestion was that it get another look vis a vis those things to try and make it clearer for people, and then bring it forward to the council for a public hearing.
That's fine, if the council wants us to take another look at it, we can do that.
We're trying to make things simpler for people, not more complicated.
Sure.
And I understand that the intent is good, I just think we could avoid problems down the road with a second look.
All right, so that's it. Any other questions or comments related to CA7? Any members of the council?
Do we need a vote to push this off, or we just?
We actually, we can't vote to this, and we'll just have the administrator interface with the Planning Board a day from there. All right, so is there a motion for CA7?
I'll make a motion to approve CA7.
Second?
Yep.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor? Ananamous? All right. Open public forum, we do have one sign up, and then we'll get to our presentation. It's for Sally Black and Kelly Lavec, for the Tiverton Middle School, Tiverton Strong bracelets, Mr. SF, smiley face.
So, a student named Abby DeMello used $100 she saved for her family summer vacation to buy 300 bracelets that say "Tiverton Strong" on them in honor of David Ferris, our Vice Principal. The money will go to his two children, so I'm gonna give, we're gonna pass these out, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, we'll both go.
Yes, ma'am.
And it'll be an honor to wear these. Thank you so much.
And we'll make sure. I think we have more announcements to make.
All right.
Trista, did you get one? Do you want to hold Denise's still? Thank you. Do you want me to say it now?
Shake your hand.
Yes, got it, I'm on the commission. Do I say one more thing?
By all means.
Not related to that?
That's enough.
Sally and I are also members of the Tiverton Prevention Coalition, and this coming Monday night, a week from tonight, at 6:30 at the Tiverton High School Library, we are holding two very important events for all members of the community, but especially parents with school-aged and older children. Kathy Myers and her husband Chris Sullivan, who was a former New England Patriot, are coming to speak about the dangers of binge drinking. They had, their daughter was celebrating and went to multiple parties in one night, apparently binge drinking along the way. She wandered into the woods, got lost, tripped and fell, and died in two feet of water, she drowned to death. They're coming, Kathy is coming and doing a presentation for the juniors and seniors at the high school Monday at 1 o'clock. We're tying it into Don't Drink for Prom, which is coming up, and then they're doing a community forum at night. So, it's 6:30 next Monday night at the high school library, and sponsored by the Tiverton Prevention Coalition. Oh, and in conjunction with that, we've got lots of things going on for prevention, in conjunction with that, at the same time, before, during, and after, we're also running an event called Hidden in Plain Sight, which is for adults only. It will be cordoned off so that the kids can't see it, but it's a mock teenage bedroom, and we take you through and show you all the nooks and crannies where your children can be hiding things that you don't know as an adult are even available, that look like a floppy, not a floppy disk, but, oh, the little sticks, the memory sticks that you put in, it looks like that, yeah, which actually isn't, it's actually a vaping tool, but to you, it looks like, you know, just what your kid should have to save things for projects at school. So, that's at the same time it's running in conjunction next Monday night at the high school. Come join us. 6:30 at the high school library. Welcome.
Thank you, Kelly.
Welcome, welcome.
All right, next up, we have a presentation. I don't know Adam, but it looks like Sal is here, from Turning Point Energy. It's a presentation on proposal for solar development in the R80 district. And I think, also wanted to mention that I believe this is the first time we're using the setup we have here to view this on the screen, so, very excited.
As am I. Oh, fingers crossed, it worked.
Worrying business. Sal, take it away.
Perfect. Thank you, Counselor. Town Council, everyone, thank you for taking the time to allow us, allow me to present today. As mentioned, Adam Beal, my colleague, he's our Executive Vice President of Development, he could not make it today, but I'm, was planning to be here anyway, so here I am. But, yeah, jumping in, so Turning Point Energy, again, Solar NAIEM, Director of Business Development with Turning Point Energy. We are a clean tech development, investment, and advisory company specializing in large-scale solar and battery storage applications. We work really in, across three different kind of core areas of our business. We develop projects, we advise utilities, think tanks, universities, municipalities that are looking to implement renewable energy, and we also invest in projects, in the projects themselves as a long-term owner-operator of those projects. We are currently operational in about 12 different states and have really jumped into the Rhode Island market due to a lot of the recent changing legislation that is incentivizing a lot of renewable development across the state, really. A lot of folks ask, you know, why Rhode Island? Why, you know, we don't have too much sun, you know, why the heck would we, why would we consider implementing renewable energy into our portfolio? Well, Rhode Island currently has about the seventh highest electricity rates in the country right now, which is coming primarily from imported natural gas out of the state. And scaling back a few years ago, the governor had decided to implement a host of renewable energy bills, and legislation was passed to promote renewable energy development, including increasing that goal so that roughly 38.5% of the total retail electricity of the state would come from renewable resources. In addition, there were various other bills that were passed as well, including ones that expanded virtual net metering, which allow towns and municipalities to participate in solar projects, and what we are considering for the, this current solar project that I'm presenting to you today, which is community net metering. Community net metering is a newer concept, also known as community solar. The basic premise is that rather than historically utilities or municipalities being able to get the advantages of solar, we can actually directly sell to residents, and so residents get the benefits of renewable energy. So, for example, someone doesn't have rooftop space, they want to implement, they want to get the benefits of solar, or they don't like the way it looks, they can now participate by entering into an agreement with us for a portion of the electricity produced off that solar project. You know, the benefits of such things include, they don't have to pay the upfront costs, if there's no rooftop space, it's not an issue, and it's a hedge against rising electricity rates. To give you guys an example of what projects would look like, these are a couple examples of projects that our team has completed. Really, they're very minimal impact, but basically you have piles driven into the ground, and you have mounting systems that come out of them where the solar panels are essentially affixed to them, as you can see in this image. A couple considerations, and I'll go into these a little bit briefly before I jump in, but a lot of folks always ask, well, what, you know, what makes a good solar project? Typically, we're always looking for, you know, the utilization of developed land or brownfields to the extent possible. The biggest mitigating factor for us is electrical infrastructure, and being able to identify a site that has adjacent to three-phase power, but also there's capacity available, which can be fairly challenging, especially in this state, finding areas where there is capacity on the line. But we look at various other characteristics, and typically the more favorable land characteristics, the less land we can use for a project. So, the project that we are proposing is along Lake Road and Jacqueline Way are the crossroads. Under, you know, under the current zoning ordinance that was just passed over, that you guys had passed over in March, this project is R80 and would be, is allowed, but basically we identified this as a good area where we have access to the distribution system, as well as adequate space for a sizable project. To give you guys kind of a rough layout, and this will be, you know, I think I'll start off by saying, we are very preliminary at this point, we wanted to just get in front of, get in front of you guys at this early stage of the process, we have not started permitting, just so you're aware of us and our intent with this project, so please, very preliminary at this point. But the system would be a nine-megawatt AC, 12-megawatt DC solar generating facility utilizing single-axis tracker technology, which actually tracks the sun. As the sun rises in the east and sets in the west, the panels actually rotate. We would have a target construction completion roughly in September. We would like to, you know, start construction roughly six months before then, sometime in the springtime. There's roughly, right now, as we're contemplating, about a 68-acre footprint of the 164-acre parcel adjacent to the site, there's, east of the site, there's a good deal of wetlands which we would avoid, and if, and work with the EM if there's any, if there's any impact whatsoever to that, so we'll work with them hand-in-hand as we're going through the entitlement process. I just wanted to quickly give a couple benefits and want to be efficient with everybody's time. I know there's a lot of things on the agenda as well, so I'll open it up to questions after this, but just a couple benefits that, you know, this specific project could bring, and we, you know, we're really excited about the prospect of moving forward with it. A ton of environmental benefits, obviously, you know, shifting a good chunk, 12 megawatts of power use to solar resource, there's a ton of avoidance of greenhouse gases that would otherwise need to be burned essentially for fuel power. All our systems, we actually plant pollinator-friendly species and mixes underneath the panels, so if you recall the picture before, there was the grass underneath. Since then, we've actually started implementing pollinator-friendly species, which also helps with the dying bee population across the world, really. Jobs, you know, the construction project would create anywhere from about 60, well, the construction, the development, the operation of the project would create about 75 to 100 jobs over a four-to-six-month process, and, you know, we're happy to work with you guys to subcontract as much of that labor here locally as much as possible. In terms of taxes, point this out, the, over the current use of the property, the project, there's personal property tax that's generated as the, through the OER rules and regulations that were passed two years ago now, roughly 5,000 a megawatt hour, which between that and the real property tax, we're estimating about $1.7 million in property tax revenue generated for the town. There's no, you know, unlike typical residential use, there's no sewer, there's no water, there's nothing that needs to be constructed. We are the quietest neighborhood you'll never see or hear. And then in addition, there's locally sourced electricity. You know, members of the community can procure their electricity directly from a project at a discount to what they're currently paying national grid. And in addition, the community investment, part of Turning Point Energy's approach to development is, you know, with solar projects, these are longer-term projects, they have a useful life of about 20 to 30, 30 years, 25 to 30 years. As part of our, you know, as part of our process as a company, we invest in every, we invest in local initiatives, work with, you know, town council folks, folks such as yourself to identify some of those opportunities as part of our process, so that's something that we would do here as well. Some of the just best use of property considerations, and then I'll jump into questions from here. There's already natural buffering that exists along, there's, it's covered, the area is covered in trees, there would be a little, there would be a certain amount of tree clearing to make, to make space for the 64 acres of the 160-acre site for the solar panels. We would leave a natural tree buffer along all the borders of the site, so there wouldn't be any view, and then along the road where there isn't any, there isn't buffering, or there's, we would plant buffering in-between trees, so if there are trees but they're kind of spread out, we would plant buffering along the way there. The project would, as I mentioned, it would power a good deal of homes through the community net metering tariff, no pollution, no noise. Like I said, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to screen the project as much as possible, so there's, so there's no visual impact as well. And not to mention, you know, as compared to a residential use, there's no sewer, there's no water, there's no kids, there's no additional taxation, it's just a great way to generate tax base without, without having to, getting an investment from the town itself, so. I'll pause there for any questions.
Do we have any questions from the council? For Sal? Counselor Ryan?
So, so the pictures that you showed is where the grass, just grass area, but then you said you're gonna have to clear the trees, so would it be, how much of that 68 acres is already cleared, or how much are you gonna have to clear, all of it?
There's 100, it's 164-acre parcel, and what we're contemplating right now is roughly 68 acres.
Right, and then of that 68, is that gonna be, because when you saw, when we saw the picture, it was like grassland, but it was like, I assume that was not part of, that was just a model picture from some other place, right?
Oh, the other...
Yeah, so I just want to know, of the 68 acres, that's a footprint, do you have to clear 68 acres of trees?
Yeah, we would mostly need to clear the 68 acres, correct. But, you know, part of the other thing that, you know, is typically part of our approach, you know, this is, I know there's a, is a hot topic, obviously, the tree clearing in the town. We do do a great deal to, you know, the area that we're not utilizing, we are very open to putting that into a permanent conservation easement to help mitigate, you know, so obviously we can't build on there from DEM, but wetlands over time tend to get worse. We do typically a pretty in-depth analysis of the trees onsite, of the quality of trees that will also provide with our, you know, with our, and then replanting, a reforestation after the, after the system is decommissioned, so we'll provide all that as part of our material.
You haven't done the analysis yet, right?
As far as...
For this particular project?
No, we haven't, very, very preliminary stage, as I mentioned.
So, I guess what one of the questions would be was like, how, you know, so, I know, I think one of the problems is, it's great to have the solar, but then it's tough with clearing the trees, too. So, how much damage does that do?
Yeah, so... Yeah, so, by our, so we have done the analysis to determine, okay, well, what are the impacts, like, you know, what are the equivalent amount of trees that you would have to plant to effectively, you know, mitigate the amount, you know, what is this actually saving in carbon with, if you factor in the amount of trees? And by our estimates, it's over 10 times the amount, so, the amount of trees that we're taking on this specific sites, you would, basically, the amount of CO2 and greenhouse gases that you're offsetting is about 10 times as much with the generation from the solar. So, while there is the, kind of the short-term, you know, tree clearing that is involved, over time, it has much better environmental impact.
Counselor Perry?
Yeah, do you fence the area off after to stop people from getting in there to do damage to those panels?
That's a great question, we do. So, the entire footprint of the solar project that you're seeing here would be fenced off with chain link fence, in front of the chain link fence is where we put the vegetative buffering in areas where there's not natural buffering already. That's exactly right.
Any other questions from the council? Sal, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, thank you for the time, and if there's any other follow-up questions or anything, welcome the opportunity to sit down with you folks and talk through it further. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, do you get a copy of the presentation?
Sal, will you be able to get a copy of the presentation to the clerk for distribution in the council?
Happy to do so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Can't figure it out? Oh, there we go.
Time delay.
Thank you, John. All right, advertised public hearings. Town Administrator, approval of amendments to fee resolution for the recreation park and beach fees, as well as return check fees.
Thank you. I believe you have this in your packet, which was not prepared by me, and I only found a few issues with it when I reviewed it over the weekend. But we do have, I think Rachel McGarty here who can help, she's a member of the Recreation What you have in front of you, on the right-hand side at the top, there's a whole bunch of lines saying "no charge," that should be "no change."
Okay.
So, what you see on the left-hand side, there would stay in effect, and the changes only affect the bottom part. The one other item that needs to be mentioned, I think relating to the lines that say Fogland and Grinnell Beach, those two lines, is that with respect to Grinnell Beach, the non-resident fee is really an out-of-state fee, and that has to do with an issue that was discussed some time ago. Further down the line, there is a $75 discount for siblings, that's not a weekly discount, that's a one-time discount all along. Now, having said this, I don't know, there is a problem with the way this was noticed, that you can actually act on this, I would hope so, because the commission needs...
I think it's fine, it's been noticed for free, so you can make the changes you gotta.
So, then I defer to the member of the Recreation Commission to explain.
Good evening, everyone, so my name is Rachel McGarty, and I've been on the Recreation Committee for about a year now. I recently took over as Treasurer for the Recreation Commission, and back in February, we began working on our summer program for 2018. It includes a lot of different camps that we bring into town, some individual vendors that are willing to set up a camp for a few days for the children, but the focus of tonight's meeting is the Summer Park Program, which is run Monday through Friday from 9:30 to 2:30, and that's gonna run for six weeks this year in 2018. And previously, we had charged Tiverton residents $100 for all six weeks, which comes down to about $16 a week, and the Recreation Committee talked about reasonable fees, and we'd like to raise that to $200, which would bring it to $33 a week to send the children to the camp for five days. There is a discount if a second child is coming, and the discount is that the second child would only be an additional $75, there's no change to that at all. So, really, when you break it down to what it's gonna cost weekly for a Tiverton resident to send two children to this camp, would be $46 a week to send the two children. And so, it was voted on at our February meeting and approved unanimously by the Tiverton Recreation Commission. The other thing we'd like to do, if we're raising the fees for the Tiverton resident, we took a look at the non-Tiverton resident fees structure, which had been $200 per child as a straight fee last year, one child, two child, three, one, two, three children, $200 each. We'd like to raise that, for the first child would be $300, and then additional siblings would be $100.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, I believe I have to open the public hearing, all right. So, we'll, then we can grab you for questions after we do the public hearing thing, if that's all right with you.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'd like to open up the public hearing, do we have any comments or questions from anybody regarding this item? Any comments, questions, as it relates to Recreation Commission fees? One last time, any comments or questions? All right, I'd like to close the public hearing. And any comments or questions from the council?
Mr. President?
I have a question.
Counselor LeBeau?
I have a question. Where'd that lady go?
You can come back now. You can come back now.
People that, in town, basically, in-town residents that really have a financial issue and can't afford, is there any way, any help in town for those people?
I'm not aware of that, and I don't know if anyone on the council here is aware, but not to my knowledge.
Any way of putting something in place, that if somebody truly can't afford it, that we can make it available to the unfortunate who can't afford this program, who would like it?
I think there was a hardship issue last year that, you know, we, we discussed it with the administrator and the clerk. And I think there was some relief there.
Is it, is it possible to make sure that we can put that in, so that some, somebody who really can't afford it, that we can make sure that they have the means to show up as well? I don't know, I don't know how to do it myself.
I can't imagine there would be any objection to doing it different than we've done it in the past, correct?
I gotta pay lawyers right now, so I can't afford to volunteer anybody.
Yeah, I think, I think what happened was, Randy, I think as long as people could produce a financial hardship, that they did accept.
Sounds like we're handling that on a one-off basis right now, Council Perry?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wouldn't want anybody left out, that's all.
Right.
That might be a topic for the, you know, for the next time the Recreation Commission meets. Maybe we can come up with a way to codify that.
Another question I had for Rachel was, I thought the, um, the residence passes, they discuss charging ten dollars for residence passes. And that way, someone from Middletown, Portsmouth, Newport, Cumberland, anybody who came anywhere from the state of Rhode Island would have to pay a ten-dollar fee. As of now, they, everybody, you can't charge anybody from the state.
At Grinnell's?
Yeah.
Correct. So with the updated information that we're not likely going to see a, a big season, if at all, from Grinnell's this, this year, the Recreation Committee deferred making that decision. So it has certainly been talked about considerably, and where Fogland is not impacted by this, but it's unique to Grinnell's. And Grinnell's wasn't opening, it was tabled.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Council Hilton?
I, I do. And it is about Grinnell's, which, we can't open until the parking lot is open, and we don't know when that will be. But you never know, they've had a schedule, there might be some time. But in terms of the fees for Grinnell's versus the fees for Fogland, last year, the council voted to make the fees at Grinnell's the same as the fees at Fogland. And I'm curious as why they're being changed back to the old fee structure.
I'm not sure that that is the most current version of current fee structure. I did double-check with Jonathan Perry, who is our Recreation Director, and he informed me that they both are the same at this point. Fogland and Grinnell's are, are charging the same. I believe it is ten dollars per day for weekdays and fifteen dollars for weekends and holidays.
Okay. So that's...
That was another flaw that I forgot to mention.
But be, but because there is no change intended for the top half, then it's not that big of an issue, right?
That's correct. The fees from last year stayed the same.
Right.
Gotcha. So it's just the proposed fee?
To some extent, you can disregard the paper in front of it.
Okay, so just...
Don't worry about the top.
So don't worry about the top part. Okay.
Thank you.
Council Chabot?
Yes, Rachel. I noticed here that the one hour before and one hour after, you've removed the charge for that. Have you also removed the, the...
Yes. So to, to my knowledge, last year's summer camp did not offer that. So this was really almost a record-keeping point, a bookkeeping of making sure that we cleaned up this, this list. So those extra hours are not offered, and obviously, we won't charge for them.
With raising the rate from, for the park program from one hundred to two hundred, does that cover all the costs? Or is it just meets the, the cost, or is it covering more than the cost?
It'll be anticipated to cover more than the cost. And certainly, something we'd like to do in the future is advocate to get a little bit more in the budget for the Recreation Commission for subsequent years, so we can offer some additional activities for the children. They come to the program for six weeks, and we'd like to see more field trips and, and more activities and events organized for them during the six weeks that they're there.
Okay. And there is no, a half-day program?
No.
So that's been removed. Was that there last year?
No.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Just that some people, some people sign their kids up, and they only bring them for three days, you know, because they got other activities they do two days out of the week. So that kind of helps balance it off with the fees.
Mr. Solicitor, can we vote on this, or do we have to continue to the next one?
You can, you can vote on this.
Okay. All right. Well, so I guess for the recreation park and beach fees, do I have a motion from anybody on the council?
I'll make a motion that we go along with the recommendation of the Recreation Committee to change the fees.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get him, Rachel.
Mr. Administrator, return check fees.
I'm gonna plead ignorance. I think it's Nancy's proposal that we have uniformity in what we charge for checks. And I think it has been varying from office to office. I've heard twenty-five, I've heard thirty-five. I think the proposal is to make it twenty-five across the board.
All right. Since this one is a public hearing as well, I'd like to open the public hearing. Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience regarding return check fees? Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Like to entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fee change for all departments for the return check fee to twenty-five dollars.
Second. All right. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous? All right. Moving on. Town council sitting as Board of Licensing. Non-advertised licenses. Charles R. Mulcahy, sixty-five B. Jav. Tiverton requests renewal of private detective license to April 2019. Chief Jones, recommendation received. All right. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion we approve Charles Mulcahy's request.
That's gonna be subject to all legal requirements?
Subject to all legal requirements.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor? Motion's unanimous? All right. Number two. Pamela Spitzer, Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, Mass., Rhode Island, Chapter 220 North Main Street, Natick, Mass., requesting a special event permit for September fifteenth, 2018, from nine AM to four PM for, quote, "Cycle for Life Rhode Island Ride", to raise funds to support cystic fibrosis mission. Any questions or comments from council regarding this license? Or special event application, I should say.
I have one question.
Council Hilton?
Does this, does this require Chief Jones's approval and/or a stationing of officers at the crossings?
Chief?
Good evening. I've met with Ms. Spitzer or their representatives, so we're gonna work out the details as far as what path it's going to take to have the least impact on traffic.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, Pamela Spitzer, on September fifteenth, 2018, from nine to four PM, Cycle for Life Rhode Island Ride.
All right.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Motion's unanimous? Mario Moliere, twenty-four ninety Main Road, DBA Ploof Ploof Gastronomy, requests vittling license for catering/takeout, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Any questions or comments from the council regarding this application? Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I'll make the motion to approve the vittling license for catering/takeout, subject to meeting all legal requirements for Ploof Ploof Gastronomy, Mario Moliere, twenty-four ninety Main Road.
That's subject to meeting all legal requirements?
Yes, I said that.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I was laughing, I was laughing at Ploof Ploof. All right. Questions, motion's been made and seconded by Council Chabot. All those in favor? Motion's unanimous?
Where is this located?
It is, um, yeah, right at Helga's Ice Creams where the truck is. It's a food truck.
Yeah.
But they're gonna have cake out of the window, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I know, I'm excited. It's got a chicken on it. All right. James Long, Sports Kitchen LLC, three hundred Industrial Way, request for vittling licenses, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Mr. Chair?
Council Ryan?
I have a question on that. I've been asked to just find out for Mr. Long, I think he's here, that it sounds like you may have some outstanding bills, and I think you don't have a CO yet. So is that, if that's true, I think you need that. My understanding is that you need it before you get a vittling license.
Solicitor's gonna weigh in on that question first.
You can, you can make that conditional as far as meeting the legal requirements. So it wouldn't issue until we had the CO and paid the fees to the town, but you can vote to approve. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. It is an issue. There are outstanding issues on that. They're being discussed as to the scope of the work that was done for which the fees were charged. And there's a disagreement about that. And I'm trying to sort that out, as to, you know, what is fair. If it turns out that, you know, it was work that was in fact necessary as part of the scope of work that was agreed to, then Mr. Long will have to pay. If not, we will see if it can be settled for an amount that seems reasonable. It doesn't affect the town necessarily.
No, I, I understand that. I was just, someone had just asked me about that. So is there a way that, so how would that work? That you would have to add something to say? Because if you're still in negotiation...
So I, I think you could just do the motion conditioned on all, meeting all legal requirements, just acknowledging that those requirements are gonna be getting a certificate of occupancy, and also resolving the issue with outstanding fees.
With that said, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Well, we can do discussion after.
All right. I'm just gonna make a motion that we approve Long Flex, as long as he meets all legal requirements, and the problem with the town is squared up.
Do I have a second? All right. Motion's been made in second. A discussion. Council Hilton?
Okay. So I, I just need to ask one more question. I have to admit, I've gotten some questions about your sign. And there are some folks who have looked at your zoning approval, who are concerned that the approval that you were given at the zoning board and the sign that's there are not exactly the same thing. Is that possible?
No. The what was approved by the zoning is exactly what's built. What was approved by the planning board was not even close to what's built.
Well, I know, but this, what, what, your, your approval is supposed to be from the zoning board, correct?
Correct.
My understanding is that you went to the zoning board for relief, which you were granted, correct?
No.
The zoning board didn't grant you relief?
Council Hilton, I think the administrator has something he'd like to weigh in on this particular discussion, if that's all right with you.
That would be swell.
Mr. Administrator?
Yeah, 'cause I've gotten calls, too.
Okay. And I've gotten calls, too.
Good.
And I've spoken with a few people. So what happened, as I understand it, is that Mr. Long was before the zoning board. The zoning board approved a particular sign, rather large, compared to what is there now. And Mr. Long installed instead a smaller sign, much lower profile, actually, I think, addressing some of the concerns that had been raised when the sign issue was before the zoning board, as to how high it would be, how, you know, overly visible it would be, et cetera. And when I heard it, I suggested that we not make a big deal out of it, that the end result seems to be exactly what people had tried to achieve.
That answers my question. I've had some questions about it, so I wanted to ask. So if everybody's satisfied, then that's fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Kevin Palmer, Twenty Star Street, Fall River, Mass., Fall River Young Marines, requesting a parade permit for May twentieth, 2018, from ten AM to noon for third annual bike ride. Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
No other than my same question. Does Chief Jones need to...
Chief?
Mr. Palmer, he's here. He also has, he's only gonna utilize the state roads, which he does have a state-approved DOT permit, and we're gonna afford him R. Patrol, so we can get these folks through town safely.
Chief, is that the one that they run from the high school?
Nope. This is the one that's going to come out of Massachusetts, out of Fall River, down eighty-one into Adamsville.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Do we have a motion?
Um, madam, madam, sorry.
So you're so used to it. It's all right.
It's like, force of habit.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for the Fall River Young Marines Bike Run on May twentieth, 2018, from ten AM to noon, for third annual bike ride.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? All right. Appointments and resignations. Resignation of Susan Scanlon, one-eleven Bracket Ave, from the Board of Canvassers. Do we have a motion to accept with regret from the resignation of Susan Scanlon?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Do we have a second? All right. Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor? Okay. We'd like to also thank Susan for her time and service on the Board of Canvassers. There is no unfinished business. Section F, financial business. DPW Anderson, request transfers of, or I should say, request transfers from account fifty-five forty sixty-four fifty-one snow removal to account fifty-five forty seventy-six eleven, gas, oil, and diesel for forty-five-hundred. Account fifty-five forty sixty-four fifty-one snow removal to account fifty-five thirty seventy-six eleven, gas, oil, diesel for forty-six fifty. Account fifty-five forty sixty-four fifty-one snow removal to account fifty-one thirty seventy-six eleven, gas and motor oil for one thousand thirty-five dollars. And from account fifty-five forty fifty-one oh one personnel to account fifty-one thirty fifty-one oh two custodial personnel for eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Director Anderson?
Thank you. Yeah, so these, these change from snow removal to gas, oil, and diesel is a result of two things. One, the price of, both are up right now. And my, the gallons used, believe it or not, are actually up on the maintenance vehicle, 'cause we were using it for snow plowing operations to save on the, on the backside of this, not hiring the, the short-term plows. So that's really what that's, that's for. My fuel is a little up on the, at the landfill right now, because we're pushing up piles of material we got for free, instead of having to buy outside soils. So that's kind of a push to as well. The custodial personnel, that was a budgeting error that was done when, when two former administrators put the budget together that I'm working on right now. Maintenance was not budgeted correctly for the two individuals I have, so that corrects that. And that's really what these transfers are for, to correct the budget, get me squared, get me through June.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments from the council?
Just one.
Council Ryan?
So will it get you through June?
These should get me right through June, yes. Yes, Marsha and I went through them all to make sure that that was gonna work.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
We should... Will you approve the transfers?
Council Perry, I guess. So you're gonna make a motion to approve those transfers?
Yes.
No need to run through them, we all know what they are. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Chabot. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Motion's unanimous?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Number two. Chief Lloyd, request transfers of forty-five hundred from account thirty-three ten seventy-six eleven, fuel, oil, and tires to account thirty-three ten seventy-six forty, apparatus maintenance, and two thousand dollars from account thirty-three ten seventy-eight forty, station slash building maintenance, to account thirty-three ten seventy-six forty, apparatus maintenance. Chief, how are you?
I'm good. Currently, our, our apparatus maintenance account is down to about two hundred dollars. I have pretty close to six thousand dollars worth of repairs that have to be made to one of our engines, which is currently out of service. This is gonna put us very tight, but we have to get the truck back on the road. So trying to move as much money as I can to that location to affect the repairs which are being done at Public Works.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments from the council? Do we have a motion?
I make motion to approve transfers requested by Chief Lloyd, as per agenda item F-two.
Do we have a second? Motion's been made and seconded by Council Perry. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. New business. Town administrator, approval slash authorization to sign... Town Administrator, approval/authorization to sign participation agreement with Rhode Island Department of Administration regarding e-permitting. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. You've heard about the effort to get us to participate in the e-permitting initiative of the state, I believe. It is initiated by the state. The state would like as many municipalities as possible to participate, to get some, uh, consistency between municipalities. It offers an incentive of $10,000 to pay for the initial setup of the system. Both the building department and the fire department have been very interested in doing this and are ready to do it. I had some concerns because I had heard that, uh, this particular vendor, there were some compatibility issues between software that's, towns already use and their software. And so, I inquired into it and, uh, whether or not that was going to be resolved and who would be paying for that. It has not been completely resolved, but we are making progress in that direction, that one way or another, that compatibility issue, in particular with the assessors' software, can and will be resolved. And I think it's important to take advantage of the opportunity to have most of the setup costs paid for. So, I recommend that we actually sign that participation agreement and keep working with them to make it work for us. Once building and fire are in this, additional, uh, applications are being developed so that we can also start using it for licensing from the clerk's office. And I think that can save a lot of people time who come here at lunchtime and don't find the doors open. But it can also save us because actually more can be done with, uh, the somewhat short staff that we have sometimes.
Wonderful. Any questions from the council? Counsel Ryan?
So, I have a question. So, that's exactly what I was thinking about, was the compatibility. But you're ready to go ahead with this, but with, with this?
Yes, I, I am...
And you're not worried about anything, any surprises coming down the road?
What I have done is talked with, uh, also, well, first of all, I've talked with David here, who had the main concern about this. And said, can we find out from your peers where we currently are? I also contacted, uh, the Advisory Committee to the State, uh, which includes town mayors and others, and sat down with them in a meeting and explained that, you know, smaller towns don't have the money to pay for these kinds of fixes, that we need assistance with that. It's my understanding now that Cumberland in particular has found, uh, a solution for the exact problem that we have and just needs their vendor to work with what's called Vision, our software vendor, uh, to make it work. So, I'm, I'm confident that it will be resolved. And I'm hopeful that, uh, we won't have to pay for that.
Me too.
But if, if it needs to be paid for, it will be the same as that annual fee that we're looking for, which I explained, I believe, in my, um, explanation of this proposal, that there will be a cost.
Yes.
But I think it will be well worth it because it will actually save us time and improve our customer service.
Okay. No, I was, I was more, I was concerned also about Dave Robert because I know all the work that he's done on it. But it sounds like you've got that under control, to, to the extent that you can.
Yeah, I'm not speaking for David. I mean, I think he still has his concerns, but he would agree that we're... And that solutions have been found in at least a couple of communities.
Okay.
So that we can be cautiously optimistic.
Okay, all right.
Any additional questions from the council? Do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Counsel Shabbat?
I make a motion to approve, authorize the town administrator to sign participation agreement with the Rhode Island Department of Administration regarding the e-permitting application.
Do we have a second? Seconded by Counsel Hilton. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimous. Chief Jones, request authorization to replace seventeen police department-issued non-lethal ECD, which is Electronic Control Device, through Axon/Taser Singles or Sole Source Vendor. Request permission to use funds from account 6928 Education Seminars to purchase the replacement units and cover the first-year payment of $6630. Chief?
Good evening. This request would fund the replacement of seventeen tasers. Currently, we have thirty commonly known as tasers or ECD devices that the police officers carry on their duty belts. We have an agreement with TASER Axon, which is a sole-source vendor, to maintain and supply us with these weapons. We're in a contractual agreement with them that they have a five-year lifespan. So, the five-year lifespan on the seventeen is up June, uh, excuse me, July 1st. So, this one-time payment of $6,630 is for 2017 to 2018. And also going forward, it'll be $3,570 per year, which I, I've spoken to the administrator about and will probably factor into the upcoming budget. But this amount will take care of us until July 1, 2019.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, what do you do with the seventeen? Do they take them back?
They do.
Do they give you credit around that?
Um, we don't get credit because they cannot be utilized anymore, which is part of the replacement plan. We have to sign an affidavit saying that we destroy them.
Can we fire Matt John before we get rid of him?
Can we hand them off to people?
I won't be in the seat that time. As long as you can prove that they don't work. All right, any other questions from the council? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Chief Jones' request for $6,630 for new tasers.
We're gonna, we're gonna pull that from account 6928?
Sure, that's what's on there.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Just one, uh, piece of discussion.
Yes, sir.
Chief, uh, we're not gonna have an impact with the education seminars budget pulling that money from there, correct?
There's approximately $19,000 in there right now.
Perfect. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. DPW Director Anderson, permissions you have right-of-way survey done on Shore Road and Barbara Street to establish town right-of-way limits.
Mr. Vice President?
Town Administrator?
I had a call from solicitor before, uh, the meeting this afternoon suggesting that, uh, the council not take action on this, given that it involves a matter that is still related to active litigation, or at least not completely resolved litigation.
All right. Counsel Hilton?
Just one comment, and maybe the town administrator is aware of this and maybe, um, the DPW director is too. But we have served, paid to survey that area before. There are, and maybe they're not the right surveys, but before we, but we, the town, has paid to have that survey.
That's what I just learned this afternoon, to my surprise.
Yeah.
I can't tell you all the surprises that I have about this, but that was one of them.
I'm sure, but there, there, and ideally, there is a copy of that survey somewhere that we did.
Yeah, and the idea is also, I, I said to the solicitor, fine if this needs to be deferred back to the solicitor's office, but it can't take another year. This, the issue is just too urgent.
Right, there is a survey that, that the town paid for a number of years ago, except because of the way the development went in. And there's actually, if you take by what the survey did, it goes through people's houses as well. We need a correction. There's gotta be a correction survey done to correct this whole, that whole development. And this was what, what the solicitor and I were talking about originally, and this is what we started, so I'll hold off.
Fair enough, I just, I just...
Before we go down that path though, 'cause I know we're dangerously close to litigation here.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that people were aware that there was a survey that the town paid for that exists somewhere in case we didn't have to reinbat the wheel.
So, no action taken on that item? Tax Assessor, David Robert, update on statistical revaluation. Is, uh, is the assessor here? Mr. Administrator?
Surprise, surprise. On this one too, I can report that, um, the request is that you not, uh, discuss or take any action on this because he basically hasn't been able to complete his analysis and will have it ready for the next meeting.
Okay, wonderful. So, we're moving on. Chief Jones, permission to hire three casual CCO, uh, which is a control center operator. Chief?
Good evening again. So, I have prepared a memo for the administrator, which I believe is part of your package.
It is.
Uh, the reason to hire three casual CCOs, under the current ASME contract, a casual CCO is an employee that works for the town completely at the discretion of the chief of police. They enjoy no union benefits, so they're essentially at-will employees, which means that they are not permanent members of the department or of the town, and they can be dismissed based on funding. Given the number of openings that we currently have in the dispatch center, we had a dispatch advertisement back at the beginning of the year to replace the retirement of Mrs. Mello, uh, the former chief's assistant. So, a dispatcher from there moved into, um, the chief's assistant, and we hired a dispatcher right now who is currently in field training. We anticipate one retirement by the end of the summer. We also have a, um, anticipating maternity leave. So, and finally, with the tentative budget that's scheduled to be implemented on July 1, with the missable court records clerk, we're going to hire a full-time records clerk, which means that one of the CCOs will move down, and that'll open up two midnight positions every week. So, the number for three would be, one, potentially to replace the opening that's going to be created by the retirement, and one to have on, uh, the part-time basis, two days a week.
Any questions from the council? Do we have any motions from the, any members of the council?
Mr. President?
Counsel Hilton?
I'll make a motion to grant permission to Chief Jones to hire three casual control center operators.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Go get 'em, Chief. All right, town clerk, permission to enter agreement with Solicitor DeSisto to complete work on codifying existing ordinances. Since the clerk and the solicitor are not here, we have Peter and Jan. I'll defer to you guys.
Uh, let me start. The town clerk discussed it with me that she would like, uh, to use some available balances in one or two accounts because of the standard requirement that we codify changes to our ordinances and that it needs to be done. There's also an outstanding need to, um, codify the, uh, form-based zoning ordinance that was developed, and so that's, that's the reason for her to do this. I verified that the balances are there in those two accounts, one in her office and one in the planning office.
Do we have any questions from the council? Counsel Shabbat?
Is the, the Sisto Law Agency going to do the codification? Or are you gonna hire out someone else to do that?
We'd do it in-house.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the council? Do we have a motion from anyone in the council?
Mr. President?
Counsel Shabbat?
Make a motion to, um, enter into an agreement with DeSisto, Solicitor DeSisto, to complete work on codifying the existing ordinances.
Do we have a second?
With the agreement having a maximum value of $25,000.
Second.
All right, seconded by Counsel Hilton. All those in favor? Unanimous? Bids and requests for proposals. Chief Jones requests permission to advertise for RFP Animal Shelter Services. Chief, welcome back.
Thank you. So, the current animal shelter that we utilize with Secan-Veterinarian Animal Hospital is a three-year contract which is due to expire July 1st. This request would support the advertisement based on bid specifications for Secan-Vet to reapply or any other qualified bid vendors.
Any questions from the council? Do we have a motion?
Mr. President?
Counsel Shabbat?
I make a motion to grant permission to advertise the RFP for the animal shelter services.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Perry. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you again.
Go get 'em, Chief. All right, DPW Director Anderson, request permission to go to bid for the following. By two minutes concrete paving, road materials, high-density polyurethane or polyethylene pipe, catch basin structures, catch basin frames and grates, unleaded gasoline, clear ultra-sulfur diesel, daily landfill cover, crack sealing, line painting, tub grinder, guard rails, landfill engineering services, and asphalt grinder. Director Anderson?
Uh, yeah, so these are all the, basically, materials that we use for the drainage, roadways, whatnot. They're all, they're all due to expire with our current vendors on June 30th. These will be for, uh, July 1st start. There'll be a single-year contract renewable twice. Um, the only thing I will mention, that the landfill engineering services is an RFP, not a bid, 'cause it's, it's an engineering service. For that's, and that's really to cover the environmental, uh, the quarterly monitoring at the, at the, for the landfill.
Do we have any questions from the council?
Uh, Mr. President?
Counsel Ryan?
So, um, while I was looking over this stuff, uh, the dates are off.
Correct. That was, that was just draft. We, we've been working on them all week just to get all the dates straightened out to give the answer, correct?
I figured somebody was gonna catch it, but I thought we might as well. So, other than that, everything is changing, staying the same, right?
Correct. Couple of things like, a couple of things I brought up to the spec to current, um, what's, what's current in, in the technology now. So, all of that's been done. Unleaded gasoline and diesel, we, I'm bidding it separately. However, we, I did, um, um, we put in for a co-op to see if we could get better pricing with a few towns in the state, and I'm waiting to see what the, so I'll juggle the prices based on what I get. My vendor seems to think, uh, that we're gonna get better pricing singly than going through the co-op. I don't know how, but I'll see what the prices come back with, so...
Okay, all right. That was, that was all I had.
Counsel Shabbat?
So, these are, these are only going out for bids if...
They'll all come back for your approval before we, yes.
Right, and you don't use them unless you need the, the materials?
Correct. Right, we order them when we need them, right?
Yep.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, I got one.
Counsel or a little bit?
Bill, with the sewer coming in.
Sewer?
The sewer's coming in, we're gonna do all the infrastructure and all this stuff is gonna cover that as well.
Well, this is, this is, yeah, this is, so we get a vendor I can go to and just buy a pipe when I need it. That's the high-density, the pipe.
So, could we agree that once they cut the road, we're gonna put all this stuff?
Correct. If, if I have to put drainage in, this is, these are the materials that we'll use internally to do all of that work.
And was that, were those numbers included, like?
These, these are unit costs, these, so these are basically, these are unit-cost bids with some estimated numbers that, that the contractor can't hold us to. He's basically giving us a cost per linear foot. So, if I buy twenty linear feet, he's gonna charge me for twenty linear feet, but he has to hold his unit cost.
But does your budget, what I'm asking is if your budget have enough to cover?
Basically, whatever the budget, I can only buy what my budget has.
Right, so with the sewers coming in, you're gonna definitely run out.
I could, right, yes.
Definitely.
No, not definitely, I could. Again, it's, it depends on how much I'm gonna do. I, if, if, when the money becomes less, I just won't do what I did this year. So, for instance, with drainage this year, we had $5,000. I spent $5,000. I do have an emergency, I have to take care on leeway, that I have to transfer money, um, to take care of that. But that'll be, that's something I have to take care of because we found it when they were doing sewer work for the, uh, down for the casino project.
So, when we open the road, we're gonna make sure that we put drainage where it's needed.
Correct. What I wanna try and do is put the drainage in, so I'm not paying for paving twice.
Right, all right.
Correct.
Any additional questions from the council? Do we have a motion?
President?
Counsel Shabbat?
I'll make a motion to, uh, grant permission to out-for bid for items identified in H2, with the exception of item 12, land engineering services, that would be an RFP.
Correct.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Counsel Hilton. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Counsel Hilton/DPW Director, award of contracts for Grinnell's Beach renovation. A bathhouse renovation and B, concrete sidewalks and pavilion slab. Counsel Hilton and Director Anderson?
I'll start, okay. So, in March, we went out for a public bid for the, um, for the renovation of the Grinnell's Beach Bath House. We didn't receive any bids. We didn't receive any bids. So, we basically took it and went and shopped around and tried to get prices from vendors. We ended up getting two bids, one from AJR Carpentry and 16on Center. The 16on Center was the low bid for the exterior and the interior renovations at $73,701. And based on my review of the bids, I would recommend going with 16on Center for that price of $73,701. All the funding should be, will be coming out of that RIDM grant award for the remediation project. And if I've missed something, Councilwoman can.
What was that figure, 17?
$73,701.
Does that include the, that doesn't include the concrete?
No, the concrete slabs, we're still, I'm still, again, we didn't get bids the first time we went out for the slabs either. We're waiting on final pricing. That will be in front of you for the next meeting.
Okay, so, there's going to be no action taken on the concrete?
We hope, it will.
Sidewalks?
Yep.
All right. So, do we have any questions from the council regarding the bathhouse renovation?
So, what is this referring to in here? The shipment, fire equipment of?
So, when I put this Agenda request in, I asked Madam Clerk for, you know, a form, and she said, oh, I have one here open on my computer, I'll just type it in for you, but I don't think anybody realized that it was an old one. So, the part about the Scott Aviation shipment, which I think were the air bottles, you can disregard.
Thank you, because I'm looking at this and like, I don't know what this means.
I saw the same thing in the backup, but that's, it's just that we're reusing paper here. We're saving paper.
All right, any additional questions from the council? Do we have a motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to award the bid for renovation of Grinnell's Bathhouse to 16on Center for, quote the number?
73,701.
73,701.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded by Counselor Shabbat. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Carriage unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, we'll wait for the concrete sidewalks and pavilion slab to come back in front of us, presumably in a meeting.
One was good on that.
All right, Town Administrator announcements. We have a memorandum follow-up regarding the Charlestown Resolution. Mr. Administrator?
I was hoping it would speak for itself, but.
All right, do we have any questions regarding the memorandum for the Administrator?
I have just one question.
Counselor Hilton?
So, you're okay with this? You think that the impact here is pretty minimal?
I think so, and if you want, I understand that wasn't really friendly to the audience to say that. So, what this is about is a bill that was put in that would amend the state law that rules also the local zoning provisions with regard to building height. And under existing law, you can already accept what's called freeboard, which is the distance between the flood elevation and the lowest member of the structure from that building height. The amendment would allow an additional increase in building height because instead of using the FEMA flood maps, you would now be able to use the CRMC projected flood elevations. CRMC's projections of the seriousness of floods that we can expect in the near future is much more conservative, which means extreme in a way than FEMA. And FEMA is well-known to be too conservative or underestimating my now flood elevation. So, the net result of that is that you start at a higher flood elevation and then still subtract the freeboard. And the net result of all of that is the concern that the buildings just keep getting taller and taller underwater, and that everybody likes that. There's a concern with what it does to the character of Narragansett Bay, of the coastal zone, of the visual access that people have who live behind these buildings, et cetera, et cetera. So, there is a objection to this additional relaxation, so to speak, of what the zoning code requires, and I think that that is a good idea to object to it.
You think it's a good idea to object to it?
Yes.
To object to?
Obviously, that would have to be on a.
Which was what the Charlestown ordinance did.
Right, right.
It objected to the proposed amendment, and I.
So, you want to agree with that?
I personally agree with that, but as I said in my memo, it's your policy choice.
No, I understand that, but when you said object to, I thought you were objecting to what they were saying. So, it's the opposite.
I'm sorry.
So, I had asked the Administrator for an opinion. Now that we have his opinion, I, it'll be up to the council, but I'll put it on for the next council meeting to, for us to potentially consider a resolution then in opposition.
Wonderful. All right, any other announcements, Mr. Administrator? Nope. All right, council announcements. Counselor Perry?
The Unified Basketball League from the high school, I guess, won the championship.
It did, state championship.
State championship, so I want to congratulate them and give them a round of applause.
I think I have something to add to that.
Yes, of course I do. I'd just like to thank Chief Jones because they had a police escort back into town, and they were just as excited about that as his winning. It was just so much fun. It was a wonderful day. So, thank you to the police for coming and escorting us in.
All right, any other council announcements?
Yeah, I got, I got something. I got a little thing for everybody. So, I'm just going on the vote for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Thursday, Friday here. I know it's coming up here, but I want everybody to get out and vote. We have two big, one and two out there, and just be careful what you do because we're going to live for the next year on how you vote. I'm not going to tell you how to vote. You know how what I want, but just make sure you get out and vote. If you don't vote, I don't want your phone call. Vote, thanks.
All right, any other council announcements? Counselor Hilton?
I have a question, and I have another request for the Administrator, which kind of came to my mind when we were having a solar presentation earlier. And in my incredibly simplistic understanding of this, there is only so much capacity in each town, right, for all these solar projects? So, I don't know what Tiverton's capacity is, but I also know that we've discussed in the past the possibility of considering solar on some of our municipal sites. So, I'm just wondering if at a meeting we can get an update on whether or not we should be looking at that sooner rather than later before we're at the bottom, the capacity is all used up before we get there? Just to, maybe we could learn something about that.
I've already begun to look into that. One of the reasons I thought it was helpful to have the presentation because it makes it real. This is coming, whether it's this proposal or the next proposal, because we have already heard about other proposals like this coming down the pike. And it's time to look at what is ultimately the result of this, and is that what you intended when you approved the zoning ordinance? Are there ways to balance things out, and where should that happen? I will say that even though the process has been streamlined for these projects of this scale, they still have to go to the large development review in the planning, before the planning board, so I think that might be a good venue to do that. But I do want to work with, also with the new planner, to look into that and see how maybe other communities have dealt with sort of the dilemma, so to speak.
Any other council announcements? I have one to make, I think Counselor Shabbat's waiting for me to make it. So, this past Saturday, I just want to thank the Fire Department, as well as the Fire Departments from Fall River, Somerset, New Bedford, and Westport, for having Counselor Shabbat, myself, and our Town Sergeant Kelly Leveque come to do the Fire Ops 101 training. It was incredibly valuable. I know I took a lot out of, out of the training. We were able to experience what it really is like, to a lesser degree than a real-house fire, but what it is really like for firefighters to have to charge into burning buildings, climb up and down ladders, wear all that heavy equipment, you know, what the smoke looks like and everything inside of the building, crawl around, look for, look for dummies, which would be dead bodies and, or maybe.
Search and rescue.
Search and rescue, we'll call it search and rescue. So, anyways, you know, I know I took a lot out of it, and I'm grateful to the Chief and the Department for putting that together for us.
I'd like to thank my buddy, Lieutenant Andrew Kettle, for taking care of me during the day, and I'm certain that Chief Lloyd, Captain Comito, certainly my buddy, and you had firefighter McGovern.